Welcome, everybody, to the Zoning Board December 12th, 2023. My name is Monty Aitken, I'm the chairman. Vice chairman, Mr. Radell. Board members, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien. This is our clerk, Mrs. Noonan. And the director of inspectional services behind me, Mr. Conlon. If you have a cellphone, could you please put it on vibrate or shut it off? And if you want to talk, please step outside. We need to hear everything that's going on tonight. It just muffles it, so. Do you have one motion to... Oh, is anyone going to speak tonight? If you could stand up and raise your right hand and take an oath. If anyone's going to speak tonight. If you don't take an oath, you will not speak.
Did you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matters now in hearing?
Yes.
You want to move 131? Nine? Can we have a motion for... I got a letter here from a lawyer. He wants to move 131 Bunker Hill Lane until January 9th.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2353, Dennis Caldwell, architects, for a variance to construct a new one-vehicle garage on premise 131 Bunker Hill Lane, Quincy, I make a motion to move to January 9th?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All some move. Furtherman of tonight's business, all business... Oh, first, can I make a motion to waive the minutes of the meeting, last meeting in...
When was it, November what?
Twenty-fourth. Twenty-eighth? Twenty-eighth.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the previous minutes from November 28th?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All some move. An oral business, ZBA 2146, on the matter of Christine Marafell, trustee ETA Outvest Boston LLC at Norfolk Superior Court Docket. Regarding case ZBA 2146, which has been remanded to the zoning board of appeals, the purpose of this remand is for the zoning board of appeals to issue further findings regarding the application of Lane Goldberg for variance to construct a single-family home in the vacant lot on the premises number zero, Gertrude Ave. Assistant City Solicitor.
The VP members of the board, Janet Peck and Assistant City Solicitor. This is a matter, first, I'd like to point out, in the audience is attorney Packer and attorney Lane Goldberg, who represent the private parties in the matter. Attorney Fleming on behalf of the plaintiffs within the security protection, and attorney Goldberg on behalf of West Boynton Investments, which is the group that saw the variance. This matter was before the court on November 1st, the trial. And on that, on the day although we were all prepared for trial, Judge Davis decided that the case itself was not ready for trial after he heard opening statements. What Judge Davis decided was that although the zoning board's intention was clear to grant the variance, the findings were not. And he believed that they were inadequate. And he remanded, and the parties agreed that this was the best course, to remand the matter to the zoning board for further findings. I was before you a few weeks ago, and we did discuss in detail what happened in executive session. So this matter is before you today, not for new testimony, or new evidence, or any new presentation. It's before you so that the four members of the board, who are still present board members who decided the case can, essentially decided again, but with more detailed findings. So those board members are Chairman Aitken's, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, and Mr. Himmel. So tonight, again, what you should be doing is discussing the case. I know you all reviewed all of the documents again. And I know clerk, Mrs. Noonan made the videos available. So you're here to discuss it again, make findings of fact anew. And as Judge Davis said, it may be the same finding you made before to grant the variance. It could be a different finding. But your actual findings of fact need to be detailed and in compliance with the statute, rather than just repeating the language of the statute. And he's further ordered that any further findings be made by December 29th, so that thereafter, should the plaintiff, should attorney Fleming decide he wants to continue with his appeal, then we could file a request for a conference.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Any questions?
No question.
No.
All right. I guess, I guess we didn't write what we're talking about, or maybe we talked about it and didn't write it. I don't know. But the finding of facts, I know, I remember the case very well. They came with a big house. We asked them to cut it back. They cut off one floor. They shrunk the house. We asked them to shrink it, they shrunk it. We asked them to take off a back deck. They took off the back deck for us. And we gave them, it met every guideline except for the frontage setback. So after doing all that, and we had a few meetings, I guess. You know, if I think, I was with counsel. We talked about it many, many times. We went down there and walked it. You know, walking counsel. It's a case I thought was more of the plaintiff. That's just my opinion. Didn't want a house there because it wasn't a house there for 30 years. And I get that. I get the change in their photography. But you know what they did have there? He has, talk about hardship. He has 27,000 square feet of land he's paying for. There's only a certain place he could put a house there. Talk about hardship. That was their hardship, I believe. So there's a few things we could write in this decision about their hardship and the amount of land they had in paying taxes for. And only be able to build a small little house. It is a small house, but I'm concerned. And there's other things that you guys were here and you want to talk about. So I'll let it to whoever wants to speak next. Mr. Himmel, you got some words too? And then we can go back around again and again till we get there.
So last time, through presentation and through site visit, it was discussed by all of us that the lot had challenges. The topography was bad. It was 27,000 square feet, but most of it slanted towards the marsh significantly. Conservation had some fairly robust requests that they plant that slope to prevent any off-site water or soil migration. Because of the topographical constraints, the property also had to be moved forward. And that frontage became off because it was the best possible site without affecting the marsh and the land behind it. And, which is one of the reasons, they came back several times, shrunk the house, took the deck off, did another items, fixed the look of the house up by moving windows to make it more symmetrical. And all of that, we found that we voted yes, because it was the best use of a lot without declaring it sterile.
Mr. Chin? Yes, so I considered the petition for variance to construct a single-family home on this property. I considered the request for relief for variance regarding the front setback, presented by attorney Goldberg. I reviewed and considered the Chrome of Massachusetts DEP WPA form. Five order of conditions. And I read through that. I considered the slope of the real lot as it abuts the saltwater marsh. Considered the construction of the foundation and what it would represent in terms of danger and impact on stabilization issues. I felt that the moving of the home forward to an 11-foot setback was reasonable under those circumstances. I recognized that other properties in the neighborhood were also similarly close to the street and closer than current regulations would normally allow. I took into consideration that this bordered the wetlands, as I indicated earlier, and that it reduced the construction obligation, options rather, in this residential District A to the homeowner. I recognized that the applicant was requesting a dimensional variance and not a use variance. And I considered whether this was in substantial derogation to the neighborhood with the property or without. In addition, I heard the testimony and considered the testimony of Chi Man, the engineer of Hardy and Mann. He presented drawings, plans, and geologist's report. He discussed the slope, the erosion control, and the excavation limitations. We reviewed 3D dimensional drawings. I had requested a slight modification in the front elevation of the property so that the windows on the left and the right side of the house would be symmetrical. Ultimately, that was allowed and approved. In terms of opposition, we considered the opposition of the attorney representing the neighborhood. And we reviewed correspondence that was submitted as well. We heard the arguments of John Walsh in opposition to the size, the scope, the water runoff, tree cutting, and so forth. He thought it would impair his property. We heard the opposition of Ms. Fell as well regarding the low cost that was paid for the property and the anticipated congestion that construction might create. We also heard the Andersons, and I considered the Andersons' opposition. I also heard counsel McCarthy provide his comments. And the fact that he thought it was a beautiful job, but it might not work, in his opinion. As a member of the board, we discussed all of these things. And we decided to give the parties an opportunity to speak again and see whether they could work out an equitable solution. We then met a second time on this case, August 24th, following the first hearing on August 10th. And we heard further testimony presented by attorney Goldberg. And in that presentation, he had a proposal. He showed us that changes had been made that had been requested by the board. We also note that the neighborhood do not provide any any other options to the developer. There were no other options that were presented. We also heard from John Walsh and Abutter during that second meeting. We heard further opposition from the attorney representing the neighborhood. I took all of that into consideration. And having considered all of that at both meetings, I voted in favor of the variance.
Sure right.
My consideration was, along with my board, fellow board members, was similar. I listened to the testimony. I made the decision based on the sighting by the conservation commission. And I didn't think that the front setback was too detrimental considering the location of the other structures in the area there. And that was my consideration. That's most of the consideration. I'm not going to repeat what my fellow board member said. But all of those things, the testimony provided, documents provided, and the conditions that were existed on there.
And the finding of facts that we heard there were facts. And there's one house that was across the street from that was set back way far, probably 35 or more. It was way back. And it looked really weird on the street. And even if they had a lot of land over there, I probably myself would have voted for variance to pull up in the street to make the street look all the same, not weird looking. But they did everything with massive. We went through this twice. And the findings of fact that we found, I'm surprised it really came back. Maybe there's not enough in here when I read, you know? Findings of fact, it just, the residents say, you know, the other conditions. You're right. So all this stuff, we're going to have to, that we just spoke about has to be in the finding of facts when we write our decision again. And we can vote again, or vote against. That's up to us. But is that house a detriment to that neighborhood? Not at all. Not at all. Not at all what we went through to make it compatible for the neighborhood. And even the council, I think, at the end, thought it worked out because it was a small house. And that's what they should have built there, a small house. Not that big thing they had with those weird windows and everything else everyone would have had a look at. And then taking the deck off, like I said, that was huge for them. That was a big part of their looking out at the marsh. Go and be able to have a big giant deck there. And they took the deck out, even when they were going to anchor that deck. Everyone was afraid of what might happen to that erosion on the back there of that hill. So I think we all did our job. I just think we should have wrote it a little better. And the clerk will take these all down, everything we said, and put them in the finding of facts that we just talked about, each of us. And now we can make a motion to give them a variance. And we can vote up or down whether to give it to them with the finding of facts tonight. You happy with that? No, is that the way, I mean, that's, that would, it's not written in here. It's really not. It's only like, what's in this is just a front setback, and you're right.
Yes, yes. So the judge is concerned that the findings of fact didn't satisfy what's required by the statute, that you address the soil conditions, shade, topography.
Topography of the land, right.
Yes, and then a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And whether they would, whether the variance, whether the relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. So as long as you have made findings of fact and put that in your decision, and it meets what the statute requires, rather than just repeating the language, then that would address what the judge's concerns were in remanding the case.
Thank you, counsel. Want to make a motion?
The matter is ZBA-21-46 and the matter of Christine Marafell, trustee West Boynton LLC at all Norfolk Superior Court Docket number regarding ZBA 46, which has been remanded to the zoning board of appeals. Purpose of the remand is for the zoning board of appeals to issue further findings regarding the application of Lane Goldberg for variance to construct a single-family home on the vacant lot premises number zero, Gertrude Ave, Quincy.
Second.
Second. On the motion, one thing, I'll click. You have everything you need, correct? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All some move. Thank you. Thank you. Furtherman of tonight's agenda. ZBA 2356, reconsider of approval, Neil Johnson, for a variance to construct a garage addition in the existing driveway with a car lift and expand the front bedroom over the garage on the premises 72 S Bayfield. Now, I guess what we have here is a couple of things that I've read from your counselor that says that, number one, you never received the decision. Was written in there. Is that correct, counsel? Name and address for the record, please.
John Bowen, 100 Cayman Street, Quamik Suny, for Neil Johnson.
So you stated that your client never received the decision. Is that correct?
Are we talking about the August 22nd decision for this application specific?
For this, no, no. For the shit, first of all.
Correct. Our understanding is that no certified decision was issued until he investigated it in September of 2023, after, you know, this memo was written and all that.
Here's what it is. And your zoning bill of your process, when you go online, there's a process. It says right there, the process, and you read the process. The process says, after the decision is made, if there's no appeal within 20 days, you can come to the clerk's office and pick up the decision. The clerk signed this that year, July 15th, or whatever it was. As I saw her copy, but that was signed. So your client should have went and got that and filed. Now, if he didn't, this board right now, what they could do is turn around to Mr. Conlon and say, since he didn't have it signed and put it into Norfolk, that he's in violation, the shed's in violation. And we could ask him to have it taken down with a fine. Now, we're not here for that. We're not. We're here to try to help your client get something built there, what he can build. Now, personally, looking at this now, and going down and seeing the property, because I wasn't here at that meeting, that addition to me is too big with the shed there. And if, I think, like, that's why they did it again. Because these guys didn't know there was already a ZBA case on there and filed. It says right in there, ZBA case, when you get down. You hit it, you put in the number you have. I have copies and documentations from the inspector. Since I've been, I'm new in this case, that I went down and had a look at it all, look at all the videos, and look at all that. And the correspondence from your client to the city inspector, he states right in it, you have the variance already with your shed.
That's the wrong one.
Right here. Set off. So it's under there. Let me grab it. It's got to be in here. As you can see, it was a busy, busy week because of this case now.
It's code.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at the bottom of this thing. The engineer, that's what we got to do later. Here we go, see. You know, it says, why do I need to go to zoning to meet the setbacks? Has explanation for average foot setback within 300 feet. Side setbacks for my shed and the back pool. Going to zoning, going to kill the project as neighbor in back will just fight anything. I don't even, and if it doesn't even impact here. These are the conversations going back and forth with the counselor, I mean, with the inspector. Talk about the Hudson Square Street, and then he's talking about the front. Now, right here, all that stuff, the conversations that he had, and he tells them what he has. He already had a case with the ZBA. I mean, he told him. So he knew all this stuff. He knew, he knew he had his case before, when it went. So what we're saying is, your shed is in violation right now, correct?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
Oh, it is. It's never been filed with the, in time.
It has been reported since.
It was never recorded on time.
It wasn't recorded on time.
Yes, I mean, it's two years, over two years, over two years.
If I could ask, the conversation that you just read, what was the date on that? I genuinely curious, I have not seen that conversation.
June 28th, June 28th, 2023.
2023?
Yeah. Wait a minute, that's the front page. It's, no, this is one of its maybe printed. Remote command, yeah. Oh, he's talking about all different things for the new addition that he needs. And then, and then he says, but you do have, you do have a ZBA case on your property. Now, this is all going from June, July 28th this year, '23. So he knew that he had a ZBA case, and he never filed. He never filed it on his application. He told him that. The inspector told him before we filed his application. So that's what I'm saying, that right now, that shed is in violation. But let's, I know you think it isn't, but it is.
Can I raise the correspondence from Inspector Knapp back in 2021, which was attached short letter? Again, Mr. Johnson...
2023, July.
I'm speaking about 2021 when the shed was first built. And Inspector Knapp went out there to inspect it on April 9th, 2021, due to a complaint by the neighbor for building without a permit. Mr. Knapp went out there, inspected it, found there to be no violation because it was less than 200, less than 200 feet. Attaches exhibit G to our letters, further written correspondence from Inspector Knapp, with Mr. Johnson saying, I'll get a permit. I'll do what I need to do. Are you sure that I don't need that? And he said, no, you're okay. So again, Mr. Johnson was always clear about that shed and what he wanted to. He was always trying to be in compliance.
I know. But when he got, he came here and got a variance, he never recorded it. That's his job to record it, not our job to go and record your property. So he never went to the clerk to get a copy of it and go record it.
You're supposed to issue it to me.
No, no. It says right there, you will go, sir. Says you will go pick it up at the city clerk's office. I don't care what it is. I'm telling you what it says in the paperwork that you didn't do. So talk to your lawyer. Talk to your lawyer about it, I guess. So, you know, I'm thinking we can maybe do something, what I'm thinking, seriously, that shrink that, shrink that garage, put his master bedroom on top, keep his shed. But shrink it, cut it in half. Make a one-car garage that he can put his little lift and lift his car up. And do his master suite add on to it. And still have a beautiful property, but it's not massive, like massive. It's just, it's all buildings. You get the shed, the pergola, the pool, this big addition and a big house. It's just too much. You have 4,800 square feet or 5,000 square feet of land, under. It's just too much for that property. That's my opinion. Now, I don't know. We can talk about it, we can go through back and forth. The rest of the board hasn't even spoken. I'm just telling you my thoughts off the top. I know that, do we have a right to have you take that shed downstairs?
Yes.
File it? That's the way I read it. Huh?
What shed are we talking about? The rear shed or the left shed?
The left shed, his left shed.
Right on the...
Yeah, the one he put up, the one he put up front, which is really his pool house.
I thought that's the real one.
Just telling you what's...
Am I wrong?
Yeah.
Enclosed shed, correct. The other ones are...
The other ones are... The pergola.
The pergola is out back.
Yeah, by the pool.
By the rear of the pool.
Right, right.
Shed's to the left of the garage, proposed garage.
Don't know, is there any ideas anyone to come up with? Or are we going to sit here and go through a process and not come up with anything? I like to see, come up with something for a guy, you know? But, any, anything, I don't know.
Just trying to get the dimension.
I don't know, you want to get rid of the shed and squeeze the addition down?
So the variance for the shed was the side setback, correct? For the shed though, or the existing side setback?
Right. So do you have any ideas? I don't know.
If I recall you.
Again, and obviously, Mr. Johnson prepared a sort of re-hearing application again. My understanding and my letter was is that there was a hearing on this already, August, that there was this memo written after the fact. And so I'm prepared to speak on the parts of that memo. Again, I'm not a structural guy, so I would defer to Mr. Johnson in terms of actual structure. Again, in our position, just from a procedural standpoint, is that sort of, the August hearing has already decided, it was unanimous vote. There are very specific grounds for rehearing, but I don't know if it calls for procedurally a re-hearing on the merits necessarily. Again, the application is the same application that was in August.
Correct.
Which was allowed.
But if the people at this place knew there was a variance given there a few years before, they would have looked at the property differently. You already got your shed that you asked for. Why did you try to put a smaller building together and do it all at once? Why come in... Why come and do that and then come for another variance, then come for another variance? You know, it's like. I don't even know your name and address at this point, okay? Because you never said.
Neil Johnson, 72 South Bay.
Thank you. And you'll be spoken to when I speak to you, so please don't speak up in the middle of a meeting. Thank you. So what we're trying to do is work something out here, but when we sit there, we have our rights too. So, and everyone I think on this board would have looked that different knowing there was a variance on that property already. So we can do this. We can put this off till next month. You talk with your client, see what you wanna do. Come back and we'll discuss what we wanna do. Is that what you guys wanna do? You wanna just vote on it now, whatever, the way it is?
My question for clarification, that what happened is that we approved the roof over the garage.
Right.
As it stands.
Right.
But we shouldn't have done that because the first issue wasn't recorded.
Correct.
And it's not a matter of record.
Correct.
Okay, so, but in our process, if you don't finish the first recording and make it a matter of record, then you don't have a right to come back to us because the first piece is illegal.
It's illegal.
Am I got that?
Is that correct, Mr. Conlon? That's what I, correct.
All right, so the sheds, as it stands right now, it sticks out, the sheds illegal.
Correct.
Even though it's been recorded at this time, there's no statute?
There is. She had, he had time to go grab it and go do it.
I understand that, but now that it's recorded now, I mean, how is it viewed now? Is it official now?
Here's how I view this. I view this like, we have the right to have that shed taken down. Tell him to go find him and take the shed down.
Because it wasn't recorded within the.
Because it wasn't recorded.
Time frame.
Doesn't have to be recorded. 20 days is our appeal theory. What's the recording?
But it wasn't, come back to me. It wasn't recorded within the 20 days.
No, 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 it just wasn't recorded. Came for another variance, which he shouldn't have because on your application, you have a form. You click the button and said, ZBA cases. He didn't put the ZBA case in. So he's telling you he didn't have a ZBA case on that property. So you think differently about the property. He didn't come here and get his relief. Now he wants to come and get more relief. You get to know, you get to look at the property like we got one tonight. Right in it, there's two cases, like '08 and '13. He's already asked for two, but the second one was just a change he used from a salon to something else. Whatever he did, it was real simple. It wasn't a change in the building or doing nothing. He just had another company go in there. The first one is, he added a palace. So he put it on his application. So you know tonight, he already did this once before. It's coming again to change it again. So you know he did. But you didn't know he had anything there. No one here knew that at the time.
So where's the violation?
He didn't record the piece of property that changed. And he came to you for another variance without telling you he had a variance. You know, without signing, all he had to do was take that paper, bring it down and sign it, and then it'd be on record. And then, and we would have known because he would have put it on his file. On your file, you have a file.
Yeah.
When you go in there, you click on. He's supposed to put his ZBA cases. Did he not do it? Or he just didn't do it? Or he just said, nah, I don't know. I don't know that. Do you know that? No one knows that.
If I may?
Yep.
Speaking for Mr. Johnson, he did not deliberately.
I don't know. I don't know what happened.
I attached the application.
No one knows.
To our letter. I don't see, I attached the application, exhibit A to our letter. I don't see any area where he's supposed to list prior zoning board decisions.
Mr. Conlon, do you wanna go through this? Because you got the page and stuff, and I gotta hear someone.
It's on the application, it's on his own process.
It's on his own process.
Front page of the application. List any previous ZBA cases. You have a summary, sir, about the application.
That's possible. He was also sent final instructions after submitting his application. So if there was any fatal flaw, I think that would've come up before he sent final instructions before the hearing.
I mean, someone fills out a form, you believe it. So you just think, okay, he just wants a, he wants a variance. But the guy whose property knows he had a variance, he should have wrote it in there.
I guess my point is, is that, again, after, in the process of building the shed, he had Inspector Knapp come out there. After that, at the time, Inspector Knapp came out again in the summer of July, this summer. There's no attempt to off you skate.
No one said that. No one said. But the thing is, if it's not your application, then the application's flawed. You didn't explain, you couldn't even explain it here. I did have a ZBA case before. No one even explained it at the meeting. I just watched the meeting again for the third time. Today, to make sure I had it right, and I said, maybe he said it. Maybe he did say, hey, you know, two years ago I was here, I got my shed, there's a ZBA case on this. That wasn't said either. Go watch it. So what I'm saying is, I don't even know how these guys feel. How do you feel about the application? Is it fine with you guys? You want it smaller? You don't want it, you do want it? I don't know. I'm just not happy about the ZBA not being signed, the decision. That's the applicant's responsibility. I think if you know, wouldn't have made a difference.
I think that's the reason why they have that box on the application.
So we don't have to guess?
Yeah. You don't have to go up. I mean, if someone else got it and now is the new owner, he wouldn't know. So you don't know that. So I know you'd feel a lot different about it. Or you could have talked about it in the lakes. Not even talked about it.
Maybe the 30-day comeback would be helpful to the applicant's situation, or?
Possibly. I mean, this is the first rehearing of any objections to the actual merits of the application. So I'm not even really sure what could facilitate a decision if we are. So far, it's just been what's been brought up in Mr. Conlon's memo. Obviously, you have to talk to our client. We'd wanna do that again. We'd wanna reserve all rights, obviously, to object to anything. Again, we have procedural objections to the variance.
I hear you, I hear you, I do.
You know, to the extent that there are any objectors or any review by decision on the 22nd, it should have been appealed to the land person.
You guys could have done whatever you wanted to do, and you still can do whatever you wanna do. That's what the law is all about.
Sure.
Everyone gets a bite again at the apple.
So, I just got it, one second. Talk to Mr. Johnson. I don't think that our proposal would meaningfully change 30 days, so.
All right, so we can vote on your proposal tonight, and we can do something else if we wanna do also with your shed. Okay? Any questions for the applicant? We've already been through the process. So he wants us to take a vote on his application, knowing now that there's a shed in there.
This would be a vote to overturn the prior decision, right? Not on the application itself?
No, they already voted to rescind it.
Wasn't that a vote to have a hearing on?
Then we're gonna have a hearing here. Then we're gonna have a meeting about it. And if you wanna continue, we'll vote on it again. So it's up to you. You wanna vote on it? You wanna pull it and come back later? I don't know, it's up to you.
Fair to vote on it.
Go for it.
Again, without waiving any rights or.
No, I know, and everyone's got a right to go wherever they wanna go, I get it, I get it. All right, he wants us to vote on the application, just like it was. You guys heard it, I've seen all the testimony. I watched all the films. And to me, that house is way too big. The way it's set up with the shed on that side. The thing's massive. You know, it's less than 5,000 square foot. And it's just, it don't fit the neighborhood. It's gonna be just, boom, here it is, here's my house. And it's just, I don't think it's fair to the neighborhood down there. Now, I was wondering what they were talking about when they were all upset. Then I went down and looked. I go, I get why they're upset. That's a big, huge house. And it's just, it's don't belong there. And he wants a variance, and you have a right to vote no now. I know, I'm voting no. All right, it's too big. If that was, if that was like a 14-foot garage, with his master ups up there with the shed there, I'd say, all right. It's a bit, but I could fit it in the neighborhood, I could fit. That's just me. I'm one vote, there's five votes here. So you guys discuss each.
I'm just pulling up the plans again, I'm just giving you some.
Mr. Chairman, comment?
We're voting no?
No, we're gonna. I'm just saying, any discussion on it, what you wanna do?
I do not need any further discussion. No.
Need anything? Do you need anything more?
I just wanna, but I'm all right.
Can you have him, you wanna make a motion? If you, let him look that up, make a motion to approve it? Or whatever you wanna make a motion, whatever you guys want.
Let me make the motion.
Make a motion to approve it.
ZBA-23-56, reconsideration of the approval of Neil Johnson variance constructed garage addition, existing driveway with a car lift, expand the front bedroom over the garage on the premise, number 72, South Bayfield Road, Quincy. Make a motion?
I approve, it's up to you.
Are we reconsidering the vote? So we have to open up the vote first.
No, we already reconsidered last meeting. Now he wants to continue and go through it.
I wasn't here last meeting, sorry.
I know you. That's why we moved it. So you'd be.
Held it just for you.
I'm in favor of the proposed project.
In good conscience, I voted for it last time, even though there was a deficiency in the recording of the shed. I feel I have to vote for it again the ninth time. I'll approve it.
So you, just to be clear, you're voting to approve of the plan as.
As is.
Correct, I see. I would vote no. I'll vote, I voted the first time, far, and I'll vote for it again.
I'll vote no. So three to two, don't pass?
We need to recite further rounds for the decision?
Well, yeah, I mean, we said all. So she's got it all on tape. If you wanna say something, why, yeah. And we can put that in.
I believe that property, that house, having looked at it again with the shed now and the pictures, is too large for the neighborhood. I don't think it's, I don't think it's good for the neighborhood. I don't think it fits in the scale of neighborhood. But also, I don't want to approve of this knowing that the shed, on a technical, albeit a technical violation, I wouldn't wanna approve it and create a precedent where other people also violate the application technicality and still go forward with their applications prospective.
Right.
So I'm against it for those two reasons.
Okay. The vote was three to two to deny? Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda. David Mahoney, Esquire for variance, special permit, special permit and special permit floodplain to operate a recreational marijuana retail establishment, 503 Quincy Ave, ZBA 2380. Yeah, you gonna put that on the screen?
Yes.
This here?
Yep.
Okay.
That's all right.
Okay. Hats off.
Right.
You show those little marijuana sticks and plants and.
Get a discount.
Never liked it. Huh?
Can you use it, I'm playing.
No, 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 I ain't talking about that. I'm talking about pot.
Daddy, you're married to an engineer.
Pizza was on the sleeve, that wasn't fun.
Cheese wings.
Must have rubbed off.
Shield lifts. I'm only here for the grace, Mr. Flum.
Existing commission. Yep.
Yeah, I knew what's gonna happen.
The way it looks now. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney David Mahoney, and I represent Chill and Bliss, who's the applicant tonight. The site that you see is at 503 Quincy Ave. It's the former Burger King.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
After that, it was Braintree Cooperative Bank. After that, Braintree Savings Bank, I think. It's been overgrown for a long time. I know Mr. Conlon knows there's some clients outstanding, and they've really ignored the property.
Yep, they do.
As you can see. My client has a proposal to clean it up and put a marijuana dispensary there. They have a host agreement with the mayor's office. We're before you tonight for a special permit for use, a special permit for work on the floodplain as they'll be doing their parking lot over. And also for a variance. The reason for the variance is it's within 500 feet of the Moose Lodge, which is a liquor license. It's unusual because the Moose Lodge is in Braintree. The general zoning principles end at the town line or the city line. But because part of the property of the Moose Lodge is in Quincy, the building department thought it was primed for a request for a variance. So we're asking for that tonight. I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian Wall, one of the principals in the venture. We could talk about the other dispensary that he has, the operations, what attracted them to this site, and you can see some of the photographs of how it's gonna look if this board approves it. Brian?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and other board members. My name is Brian Wall. I'm a co-founder of Chill and Bliss.[1657.08] My name is Brian Wall, I'm a co-founder of Chill and Bliss, I'm also the founder of Flower and Soul in Halifax, which is a recreational dispensary, we've been open eighteen months now, we opened June of last year. You know, we have done a lot. For the town, we brought back the Halifax fireworks that we've sponsored every year since opening, and we give back forty hours per employee of community service to the community. And we've had no issues, we've actually worked with the police department, because our cameras pick up one oh six, so there's been some hit and runs, and they've come back to us to see if we picked up any of the cars with our cameras, so we've, you know, where needed be, we work with local authorities. All our security and fire was approved and worked with the Halifax Police Department, we would do the same thing in Quincy, make sure all the security cameras cover the areas they wanted. Our initial security design has thirty-five cameras between inside and outside, so the only part of inside and outside of the building that isn't under camera is the bathrooms. The reason we like the area is, it's a dilapidated building, it's a building that needs some love. In Halifax, we took an old warehouse and converted it into a dispensary. So we look at it as, it's at a street light, it's a high-volume street. You know, borders two towns that don't allow recreational marijuana in Braintree and Waymouth, so it gives us a larger pool of potential customers. It has, you know, access in multiple spots. This is a rendering from our architects of what the building will look like when it's done over, with, you know, obviously the outside and new landscaping, and then this is what the interior would look like on that. One of the things that we will do during construction is, where possible, hire all local labors. You know, from woodworkers, electricians, you know, if there's a local security firm that has experience in cannabis, because the security regs from the Cannabis Control Commission is like fifty-five pages long, so you kinda have to have someone that's been there, done that, because it's the biggest thing they audit you on every year, with surprise inspections, is your security cameras. All security has to be maintained for ninety days by CCC regs. So in Halifax, we maintain it for just over a hundred days, and then it gets overwritten. And, you know, where possible, you know, with Quincy being so big, we will, you know, try to hire predominantly all our employees from local labor, labor force, so people that wanna work, and it could be, it'll be a blend between full-time and part-time. We would expect somewhere between fifteen and twenty employees. You know, between full-time and part-time, each shift will have between five and seven employees, so we will run, you know, four cash registers, there'll be someone in the fulfillment vault, and then that little box when you come in the front doors with the rest of your list, so you can't get into the dispensary until you've done your ID. And the biggest culprits that we find in Halifax are the older generation whose license has expired, and they don't realize their license expired, so I can clearly tell they're over twenty-one, but because you can't pass the ID inspection, I can't let you in the dispensary, so we have to say, oh, do you live local? But it, you know, it doesn't matter who you are, if you can't drop your license in, I can't push, buzz you in to the dispensary. You know, so overall, we're excited about Quincy, the location being, you know, good traffic flow, e, access in and out to the, and then to be a good neighbor, to work with the neighbors, to make sure it's a site that they're happy to have across the street from them, and to, you know, be a partner there, it's not just a, a new vendor, a new business in town, we wanna really be part of the community and, you know, provide help where we can. And again, you know, as you can see, all those little boxes on the outside are all cameras. So you can see how many cameras are on the outside of the building, you know, they're where the drive-thru used to be for the bank, and there, so those will obviously pick up, in the whole parking lot will be covered, and then again, if the, if the police wanted anything picking up fifty-three, you know, we can add additional cameras where need be, that the city would want us to, but as you can see, the building, you know, is like a bank from a camera and a security perspective. And just from a securities perspective, there's only been one dispensary broken into in Massachusetts since recreational went live in two thousand seventeen. And it actually happened with Pure Oasis during the Black Lives Matter riot, and somehow they made it through the cameras, so everyone thinks it was kind of an inside job, because they knew every little, they knew everything, how to get around it. So, but that, there's really been no crime in dispensaries, in delivery, the delivery would actually happen in the back of the building. Again, if the town wanted us to, we could, you know, put up gates, so that you could come in, it would be, you know, the truck would be secured between gates before it got in. So again, we're, we're happy to work with, with the city and the police department on however they want us from a security perspective.
Now, when you walk in and you get buzzed in, is the product in the cases right there to look at?
Yep, can I go up to this one? Yep, so you would come in here, get ID, if you pass, they buzz you in. This is a display account, this is, so this would have, and it can only have empty cases, so it could have an empty bag of gummies, so there can be no product on the floor. So there has to be empty containers, so if you drink beverages like Levier or Can or High Tide, they could have a display in camp, but there would all be empty cans, or the cans would be unused beverages. This would be like merchandise, or these might say sleep, relax, energy, so then it's like you knew, I can't sleep, and you wanted to come find something just for sleep, you could come to this display right here.
Is that all locked, it's all locked?
All locked.
There's no product, there's no product in there.
No, I know, I know, and the, and the, and the back, I didn't know if it was.
Yep, all, all locked, all empty containers. And then this area right here is the wall.
Yeah, they put origano out there.
I'm breaking one.
Yeah. And this area is the wall, so the wall has two pieces of sheetrock, and then in between it has like chain and fence, the way I, you know, it's a little tighter, so you'd have to have a sawzall to get into the wall. And then we have a, an office and a break room, and then two bathrooms, so it's really minimalistic from a, you know.
Delivery, how much product is in there at one time, is it delivered twice a week, is it delivered once a week? I have no idea.
So we try to do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So there's not a lot less product on the, on the bill, right?
Yeah. There'd probably be a couple hundred thousand dollars in there. And then each one of these cash registers has a camera directly at it, too. So, you know, when you're cashing out, the camera's picking you up, and then there'll be three sixties up here. Again, there's no way you can, you're seen a hundred different times, right, in there. Yep, and then this will be, if we have what they call pop-ups, so if someone's promoting their brand, you know, a beverage company, or a flower company that educate people, we'll put them over here, and they'll have like an information session on that.
So they rent the space from you?
No, we just give it to them, you know, hopefully drive sales. Yep. And then this would just be merchandise, so like lighters, different things like that, like stuff that you could buy in a liquor store.
Papers always.
Yeah.
Batteries.
Someone steals, breaks in, steals, you're stolen, can't leave. Any questions, guys? Way to go, man.
Nah, I know it was Burger King, then it was Braintree Coop, then it's closed, it's been sitting vacant derelict for quite a few years. I've been buying a place in Halifax, one oh six, I go by it all the time, it's neat, it's clean, parking lot's great, so.
So you stop in a few times.
I may have.
If anyone wants a tour of it, just let me know, I can make sure I'm there.
Thanks.
Carlos, please.
Yep, if I may, Carlos Sculte, with Civil and Vibe, my consultants, we're civil engineers on the project, we help with land surveys.
Address, please.
Thirty-one Bellows Road in Rainham, Massachusetts. I actually live in Halifax, so very familiar with that facility as well. So this is a site again at the intersection of West Howard and Route fifty-three, the Quincy Avenue. It's, really, it's in, in tough shape right now, it's Burger King, it's the bank, really found a good use to revitalize that space. Again, the photos, again depicting, it's, it's not in the greatest shape right now, so in the proposed condition, really adding a lot of, you know, street presence, as well as landscaping to the site, to really make it a much more functional and attractive site. Talk a little bit about the site contents, right, so the existing building is a little tough to see at this resolution here, but the existing building is at the center of the site.
We've all been down.
Yeah, there's three points of access, in, one directly off of Quincy Ave, two after West Howard. In the proposed condition, we'd actually be improving the pedestrian connectivity by adding a sidewalk that connects to the, the public way along West Howard, a new crosswalk that brings you into the front door of the building here, new ADA parking struck being, pulling back some of the pavement, adding some additional landscaping, and just generally improving the site, closing the seal code and re-strive the parking lot to go improvements to really help the, the streetscape portion of that. With the access, we're proposing to maintain the two access points on West Howard as, you know, full-controlled access points, the one on Quincy Ave. We also performed a traffic study, we're proposing to keep that as a right-in, right-out only, in order to minimize any sort of traffic backups for people that, that wanted to make a left. Recognize that, that's not really in the best interest of the traffic flow of the site, so that's one of the recommendations, is to make that a right-in, right-out.
How do you get people to adhere to that, coming down Quincy Ave, heading north?
We'll, we'll have, we'll, we'll have signage, it'll be well-posted, you know, do not enter for, for the folks coming in this way. And, and there is a billboard, or a pylon sign here at the intersection, so I think the signage would help direct people to the fact that the facility's there, and there's access on West Howard, frankly, the lights right here, it's gonna be easier for people to be able to make a left turn, right a down, regardless. So I think it's just a habit, people will learn after a while, just how to maneuver that intersection. From the grading utilities, really minor changes to the grading, just to make sure it's ADA compliant, just some minor grading along the site. As noted earlier, there's a very small portion of the site that is technically within the floodplain, so that's why I worked for you today for the special permit for the floodplain, we're not changing grades, we're not really modifying anything as it relates to the flood detection there. And then landscaping, really, that's the biggest change, so we're, we're proposing to add a lot of additional and new landscaping along the front edge, that's really gonna help the street presence there, as well as foundation plantings along the sides of the building and the view of the property. It's really gonna help the curb appeal of the property, prepared by a professional landscape architect, so working with a client, really spending a lot of money to help improve the site. From a traffic analysis, we did include a full traffic impact study as part of this project, we worked with Ally and the traffic department to identify what the scope of the analysis should be. We formed traffic counts, analyzed the volumes and the flow. Ultimately, you know, the, the main result is that there's really no change to the peak hour traffic volumes that were gonna be seen at the site relative to the existing use that was there, which was the bank. So it's really a negligible change to the traffic patterns that you're gonna see at the site. Again, the peak hour rates, they actually go down a little bit, so it's really not gonna see a material change in the overall traffic for the site. The only real recommendation other than the existing use is restricting that right-in, right-out access on the Quincy Ave. And again, there's a floor plan, and that's an overview of the project from the engine. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
No, the landscape plan, do you have it all laid out, which trees are which?
We do.
Which bushes, okay, that's all you want.
Yep, it's all identified, tagged, the counts are all on there.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any questions?
No.
Jim?
Yeah, and on your signage, you're going to be using the same type, size, and poles and the locations of the, the previous signage of the, of Burger King?
So the, the pylon sign that's at the corner, that would remain the same shape and everything it is, the details of what that signage would look like, we'd obviously work within the ordinance to make sure it conforms to that. The building signage as well, whatever signage is on the building, I, I think we've worked with the advocate on what that is, and we've worked in the constraints to make sure that it meets the zoning requirements.
So we know, you're looking on sightlines for our traffic and so forth, at, at that intersection?
No, yeah, so it's designed so that we have the, the lower shrubbery at the driveway access point, so you wouldn't be obstructing them for the sightlines. There are good sightlines at, at all the traffic points that we have there.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have two, the first one is, is that the signals in there are new, relatively new, I don't think they're two years old yet. Is there a dedicated left-turn arrow on that, on the not bound side?
Do you have to West Howard?
Yeah.
I, doesn't, doesn't look like it from the, the aerial.
I can't recall, I've been through there, I've been through there, I just can't recall a dedicated left turn. In that, you know, delayed for everybody coming.
I don't believe there is.
No, there's one on the other side.
Yeah, and I think that there's one, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll take it a lot. I don't know if this one coming north.
Can you take a look at that? To see if you?
Yeah, I'm looking at the aerial right now, I don't believe there is a dedicated left turn.
Not a lane, just a, you know, a light, just to see if you could.
Okay.
Do it.
Yeah, we'll certainly work with the city traffic department, see if there's any modifications.
The other, the other issue I have is, if you're gonna make that a right turn only lane on Quincy Ave, I hope some sort of a berm to discourage people from coming off. You know, like a raised berm there, give you just a right turn in off of.
I think that becomes a much bigger challenge, I think, from permitting and construction standpoint.
It would also discourage anybody from taking a left.
It certainly would, but I think that becomes a challenge.
Raised berm with a sign in there and?
I think the geometry.
You could put the first one, and then the next one's longer, so, yeah, it can't go, I mean, you'd be in the middle of the street if you had it, right.
Oh, I mean, right in that, like it could create a little.
You'd have to go in the middle of the street to get in if you did that one, right.
I mean, just, I'd have, just ask me to take a look at it and see if it's feasible.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it, for me.
So that concludes the presentation, Mr. Chairman, as you can see, it's a dramatic improvement to the building envelope, and the team is here if you have questions.
Just hours operation. What are you, what are you doing now?
Seven to ten.
Seven to ten, okay.
Yep. Seven AM to ten?
Yes.
And how many days a week, seven? Seven to ten, seven days.
Yep.
No relief on Sunday, huh?
Go to church and then.
Go back to the.
Back to the pool?
No, I'm saying, like, close at six in the night, so people might have to work Sunday. Who knows? My two questions, that, will fulfill, my landscape plan tonight, seven to ten. Alright, I don't have any questions. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Anyone here wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call?
Surprise.
Really, John?
John Orffel, sixty-two Grumal Road. I actually, there's, this will be the fourth recreational one that you've approved, and this is the only one that I think is in a really good location.
Thanks, brother.
So I think this location, out of the four that, you know, were approved, and I think, I'm not sure if Attorney Mahoney is a hundred percent accurate, but he's right ninety-nine percent of the time, so what he was saying, that this might be the last one, because we can only issue so many based on how many permits we give out, so everyone that's worrying about all these recreation places are gonna keep popping out, if we've hit our maximum, then you won't have people coming back asking for another recreational place, so to me, that will be good, because I don't think we should be wasting time on, you know, putting this, I don't think when a liquor store comes up there, they don't come up and get a special variance, they just go to the license board to say, you know, can I have a license to do business here? One thing that you were saying on the parking or taking a left there, if, it was like a little triangle thing, so it was almost impossible to take the left, if you look at the Botera that's in Taunton on one thirty-eight, they actually redid it, and they made these really high granite pieces, so like, it's impossible to go. You still have Meatheads, I mean, when, when I go to the Botera that's in.
There are people going down a highway.
I'm not, you, you're not supposed to take a left coming out, but sometimes I take a left, I mean, so, I mean, you know, sometimes if you can't get out one way, you're forced to go out another way if that's there, but if you make it so you curve to the right, it'd be impossible to take a left going out there, because I'm thinking, get, every time I went to Burger King there, I never remember going in off of Quincy Ave, I always remember going in off of East Howard Street. So, and if you do open up there, you're gonna have to let people have it their way, because that would be a Burger King. So, you know, that, that's, that's within the league, if you look at the bottom line, but. You know, it's good for competition, we're gonna get a lot of Braintree people, a lot of Waymouth people, and we're gonna get taxes out of those people, and you know, I, like I said, if, if marijuana stores are a bad idea, then liquor stores are even a worse idea. And I don't think either one of them are an evil. Thank you, I am ruthless.
Thank you, John. Gives everyone a better price, right, John?
Yes.
There you go.
Capitalism.
Is there anyone else, last call? Hold on, I have a hearing, I got a letter from the DPW, and it says, hey, review the submittal of the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? Please step forward, state your name and address for record, please. If anyone else wants to speak after him, come right up, you'll be next.
Really gentlemen, had a nice presentation, but I have a more, and more honest presentation.
Just your name and address.
Pat Croll, East Bar Road, directly across the street from the pot shop.
Yep.
Directly. We have students, Quincy students, directly getting off the bus, directly across the street from the pot shop, I mean, it's like from here to here, it's the width of the street. Pot shop belongs in the commercial business, doesn't belong in a, in a neighborhood, and that's what it is. what it is. Let's not keep the children of Quincy on the sidelines here. They're going to see it every day. They're going to ask questions, their parents, whatever. Jesus. Approximately 20, 25 students get on, get off the bus twice a day. Let's help the children grow without a view of the pot shop. I think that's important. This is our children. It's just a bad look all around. My bottom statement would be, please stay out of our neighborhood, meaning the pot shop. All love to children. I'm going to carry that with them forever.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, bro. Anyone else? Close on the side?
Good evening, Boris. Thank you. Attorney Richard Ash, 14 Mountain Street, Ward Two City, Councilor-elect. There was a community meeting on this project back on June 26, 2023, hosted by the applicant, Attorney Mahoney, and Counselor Andronico. I could not attend that meeting, but I've had a chance to speak with a number of the abutting residents over the last few months, and I'm here to voice some of their concerns. South Landing is a 72-unit condo complex, a stone's throw away from the proposed location. There are a large number of families with school-aged children, as the board just heard, in that complex and the remainder of Bower Road, that of course is the main concern. There are also a lot of kids at 25 West Howard Street, right over the train tracks there in Braintree. QPS school buses pick up kids and drop off kids for school right across the street from the proposed location. The kids ride their bikes around that neighborhood. I don't think I need to tell the board that there are a number of studies that of course show a correlation between location and usage and children going through the school system. Another big concern is the traffic. Rush hour traffic at this particular intersection is already bad. It's hard to take a left-hand turn out of Bower Road during both morning and nighttime commutes. The property is also on the MBTA bus route. Some of the issues and concerns I heard were revolving around whether people would, consumers would take the bus to the location to buy product and then have to wait for the next bus to come around or something of that nature. The ZBA heard a lot of similar complaints a few months back with respect to the marijuana retailer proposal on Liberty Street. Quincy zoning ordinances state that marijuana retailers cannot be within 500 feet of daycare, schools for those under 21, public playgrounds, youth fields, arenas, the list goes on. So the ordinances as drafted essentially say, if you're not near any public amenities, then this is where we could put the retailer. And I understand that that direct ordinance isn't up for the board's, you know, edification tonight, but if you think about it, it's saying, if you're not near a school, a park, a playground, or anything nice, then we're going to put a marijuana retailer next to you. So if you do live there and you are the kids, it is quite unfortunate, to say the least. They're exactly a mile from Quincy Cannabis, and it's a 20-minute walk, but about a six-minute drive. The other day I did it. So the residents, unfortunately, as, you know, as great and nice and amenable as the applicant sounds, the residents' concerns are summarized right here. So the board, I'd be happy to work with the applicant after the fact, whatever the board decides, but those were the residents' issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Close on the side? Last call? Closing of private hearing closed. You know, I get it. Oh, the letters. Oh my God.
They're all going to be in opposition.
Yeah, they are. Just trying to see if.
Mark Perrigard, 15 Bower Road, Quincy, Mass. What does the weed shop add to a neighborhood? Quincy already has establishment on Washington Street, Rashudi Drive, apparently seven more in the works. If these businesses are so lucrative, spread the wealth, I can think of a half dozen empty retail locations in Quincy Center whilst in Orange Quantum. Oh, but that's right, they can't open up there. According to current zoning regulations, these businesses are restricted to a few parts of Quincy, essentially Ward Two and Ward Four. Disheartening to realize our neighborhoods have been effectively redlined, that our lives, our well-being, our safety, our community is not as valued as much as other parts of the city. According to a 2021 study from the Rand Corporation, young people who live in areas where marijuana shops are more likely to use, more likely to become heavy users, are more likely to have issues with their consumption of cannabis. We are homeowners, taxpayers, parents, retirees, students, children. We deserve the right to maintain our peace of mind. Please reject the variance request. Do not force us on our neighborhood. Leona Golden, 15 Bower Road, Unit C. The email. Is there any more to this?
I don't know.
We must have cut off. Just says thank you. We got that. Just a thank you part. She's in opposition. Maureen King, 15 Bower Road. Maureen, I reside in Ward Two Bower Road, writing regards to recreational marijuana being proposed. I strongly oppose. This is the last thing we need in Quincy. My understanding is only Wards Two and Wards Five are where establishments can go. That is totally unfair to the residents of those wards. Also, this is going to be at a four-way intersection that is already extremely busy and unsafe with the way people drive. We do not need additional traffic. I hope the zoning board will oppose this. Thank you, Maureen. Oh, it's Leona Golden. Sorry.
Yeah, that's what it says even here.
Yeah, sorry. Leona Golden, 15 Bower Road, Unit C. The building in question is at an extremely busy intersection of Quincy Ave and Howard Street, both east and west. There are train tracks situated behind the building and stop traffic completely at least twice in a day for about five to seven minutes. It's also an MBTA bus route. Howard Street is a cut-through from Route 52 to 38, and during rush hour, both morning and evening traffic is nonstop for several hours, making it nearly impossible to take a left-hand turn out of Bower Road. I live at South Landing. There are 72 units with families living here with schoolchildren. The remainder of Bower Road has housing that was built for Habitat for Humanity many years ago, which houses many families with children. The school bus stop is directly across the street from the entrance to 503 Quincy twice a day. This is the Braintree Quincy Line, and although the property is listed as Quincy, there is no concern for the residents across the street at 25 West Howard Street, with a Braintree address with multiple families with children within 1,500 feet of the property in question, that areas affected by this proposed business will open until 11:00 every night. Now, there's new development across the street, which will be adding to traffic concerns. I do not believe this is the best choice for this proposal to go forward, not only for the traffic concerns, but especially for the cannabis sales near young children.
Now, I'll call a private closed discussion. You know, I get when people say that, and, you know, there's cannabis in my neighborhood and all that. That's a main drag. Both roads are main drags going in and out of there. There's Burger King. This is going to have a lot less traffic than a Burger King. Like, one-tenth of what Burger King does. And to me, in a main drag like that, that's where they belong, in a main drag. People get in, get out. I'll be going there, right? Think it's a nice project. I think it's cleaning up the neighborhood there. And it's recreational marijuana. They're going to get back, they're going to car late. I went up to that one and spent two days up to the one up, and saw you do, and see nice people come in, and nice cars, go in, grab their stuff, get in the car and drive away. I was seeing what was going on. Someone told me stupid shit was going on. It wasn't. They were just doing their business. Very nice business up there. They had Empire, whatever it was called. What was the name of that place?
The one on Rotherly then?
No, I went up the.
Rashudi Drive?
Yeah, what was?
It was Ermont.
Ermont.
It was Ermont.
It's changed.
Somewhere else, but I went up there and spent a couple days up there. And I tell you, I was real surprised. Mercedes and caddies and real nice vehicles were coming in.
Massachusetts voted in favor of medical marijuana, I mean, recreational marijuana. So I would, I hate the idea of leaving Quincy Ave open and just saying, you know, kind of telling people to adhere to a right turn only. So whether it's a berm in the middle or just making that an exit only, I just, there's going to be people turning off Quincy Ave. You're going to get people jammed up into two different places. I just think from a traffic perspective, you'd be smart to figure out something, man.
I feel like they don't want that either.
No, nobody wants that.
You can put it in the record. We can do that.
Yeah, his cameras will pick up all the accidents we have. But other than that, I understand the concerns of the neighborhood. You know, it's been voted for, it's passed. You know, it's part of the future of our neighborhoods. We've got to get kids to understand what's right and what's wrong, you know. And just like there's a liquor store on every corner now.
There is.
They sell booze in every 7-Eleven in the country. You know, right, wrong, indifferent. It's just the way that society's changed. I'll be in favor.
Not good anymore. Getting weirder.
Yeah, taking a right onto Quincy Ave, I think you could granite curb it so it'd be impossible.
Yeah, it's like stopping shop has.
Stop jobs.
Yeah.
You know, the state did vote for it. It's here. It's an empty eyesore as it is now, so I'll be voting for it.
I'd like to hear from the applicant as to what they might propose in terms of helping out the children, the students in the city, where part of their proposal indicated that the employees provide 40 hours of community service at one of the locations. I'd like to know what they would consider doing for the city of Quincy and the children that the neighbors talk about.
Sure. One's asked.
Well, my concern with the school bus there, they have the cameras there, so any tough activity in the security that's there, I think that answers that question. I'm sure that they'll be observing, or they'll be able to observe if there's any issues.
They can't get in.
Right. Even, I mean, if there's issues created out of the traffic, they'll have video.
If the applicant could, tell us what you're going to do for the city of Quincy, or what your employees might be doing for the city of Quincy.
Yeah, so with the city of Quincy, we would, you know, want to reach out, obviously, to the police department to see if they have any drug prevention programs for the youth that we could sponsor and have our staff, you know, be there, handing out information, educating the thing. You know, we'll work with school systems, again, on drug prevention, drug education. You know, with, you know, the FDA limiting it, there's been more research coming out of the institutions. For the longest time, Harvard and Stanford couldn't do any marijuana research because they would lose all their federal funding, but that's being lapsed now that the VA is doing a lot around marijuana for veterans. So, you know, as more research comes out, we'd like to share that research with the city and the school departments and, you know, do education if there's nonprofits that have any, you know, it doesn't have to be drug awareness. It could be, you know, anger management, anything to help promote the kids. Could be youth movement, you know, athletic programs. So we'll be out there helping the city, you know. If approved, we'll be out networking with all the different organizations across the city and leadership within the city to find out, you know, what organizations could use both manpower support and financial support.
Sure. Just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So do you require this of all of your employees and one or more of the supporters? Would you be doing that in Quincy with your employees? How does that work?
Yeah, so we encourage if every employee, in their offer letter, they're given that they have 40 hours of community service work that they can take off. You know, so they're requested. Sometimes we'll say, hey, like for the Halifax fireworks, we know we need like five employees to work it. So they're getting paid to do face painting and different things to help promote, you know, the event. So yeah, in their offer letter, it's that they get 40 hours of community service.
So they get paid for that?
Yeah.
And they can do what they want or what you want them to do?
Yeah.
Would you consider coordinating that with Counselor Ash? Because we couldn't oversee this.
Yes, 100%.
Would we do that?
Yeah, we're willing to work with them. And just quick on the MBTA's boost up. So there's a 350 dispensaries in the state.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I'm looking at an extension here that we already gave one on your.
ZBA 23-80, David P. Mahoney, asks for a variance, special permit, special permit flood plane to operate a recreational marijuana retail establishment on the premise number 503 Quincy Ave Quincy. Make a motion to grant the variance, special permit, and special permit flood plane.
Second.
On the motion? Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. So move. And if you could put in that decision that they'll work with the counselor on those hours, that the employees can figure out something, so is him writing. No one forgets. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Let me just take five minutes. We'll come right back. I got an old case here. I just want to take curious. It's 190, 196 Washington Street. They're looking for another six-month extension. They're trying to keep the business in Quincy and they're having a tough time finding a place. So I'm going to make a motion.
It was a great place, right on the edge of Quincy Ave and East Howard.
Yes, right there. Beautiful. Missed it, right?
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2219, 190, 196 Washington Street, Quincy, and make a motion to.
Hey, guys, hey, guys. Hey, hey, hey. Come on, we're conducting a meeting. Thank you.
Extend the variance for another six months.
Second.
On the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so move. That's awesome. Further on tonight, new business. Chris Chow for variance finding to extend the rear of the home, increase the height of the roof on the premise number 30 Nelson Ave.
Applicant.
Applicant?
Chris Chow, 30 Nelson Ave. Good evening, everyone. I'm here for requesting a filling variance for the extension of the rear of the house of 30 Nelson Ave and increase the height of the roof. This extension is crucial for my aging parents as they are looking to have a single bedroom in the first floor, so that way they can't, they don't have to navigate the stairs going up and down the second floor. And we've been living here since 1997 and haven't made major repairs or renovations for the house. So we are looking to do upgrades for the house as well to do that, to live in a more comfortable living space.
Now, you're putting the addition in the back downstairs, and you're going to have one bedroom back there? That's where it's going to be? One bedroom with a bath?
One bedroom, exactly.
What about it?
It'll be a bigger room upstairs.
So you're keeping the same number of bedrooms, you're just adding that one?
Correct.
So you're going to have three upstairs now, right?
Yeah, three bedrooms upstairs.
And they're all going to be bigger?
Yes.
And you only have one bath upstairs?
I believe two.
The three bedrooms?
Two bathrooms upstairs.
No, we're not opening that. Come on, we got one. All right. That's a little better. All right, that's it. I have no questions.
I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Right, right.
All right, I got a letter here.
Can I have a seat now?
Anyone? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I got a letter from the DPW. They reviewed the cover from the project, have no comments. Anyone opposed or on the side? First call, second call, third call closed. On the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 23-73, Chris Chow for a variance and finding to extend the rear of the home and increase the height of the roof on the premise number 30 Nelson Ave, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance and find it.
Second.
The hardship on that is talking about, you know, the project, wherever it is.
From the topography in the back?
Yeah. The path. Second age?
Second.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so move.
33 feet high.
What's that? We're all set.
33 feet.
Thank you. Pick up your decision in 20 days. If no one appeals it, register. I think I have to start saying it. ZBA 2381, Florence Lee for variance finding, special permit flood plane to subdivide the lot and construct a single-family home on the new created lot, premise number 46 Division Street. The applicant representative here, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Rob Fleming from Fleming &amp; Fleming. I do represent the applicants here, Florence Lee and Derek Edmund, concerning their proposal at 46 Division Street. With me this evening are Florence and Derek are here, if you have any questions specifically for them. Here as well is Claudio Sala, our engineer from DeSalle Burke Sala, so he will be presenting as well. Our architect. Um, our architect, um, uh, Ray Ramirez, uh, Flow Design Architects was not able to be here because of a conflict. Uh, this is a single family, hopefully I can kind of give you some of the specifics with respect to the proposed single family here. Um, so first, existing conditions, 46 Division Street does consist of a lot that's approximately 12,039 square feet, uh, located in a residence A zoning district, currently improved by a single family residence, um, fronting Division Street. Uh, it does have two garages on the site as well, those will both be, uh, will be removed uh, for the proposed single family. Um, Ms. Lee actually resides, um, at the existing residence at, at 46 Division Street since 2004, uh, so knows the neighborhood really well. Um, the proposal itself, designed again by Flow Design Architects of Salem, is to subdivide this 12, over 12,000 square foot lot, uh, into two parcels. Uh, one parcel, both parcels are fronting Division Street, but one will consist of a little over 6,700 square feet, uh, which will obviously keep that existing single family on it. Uh, the second parcel, which will, is the vacant portion of this land, also, also fronting Division Street, will consist of 5,295 square feet for this proposed single family residence. This proposed single family residence will contain, uh, four bedrooms and three and a half, uh, bathrooms. As I said, this particular, uh, property is located in a residence A zoning district, which permits only single family residences. So with respect to zoning relief before this board had requested, uh, we are not seeking, um, a use variance, we are only proposing what's allowed by right, the single family residence. We are requesting some variances, minor, I consider, um, like I do with, with many of my clients, is to really understand, um, you know, before you, you get too far, is to really understand each and every neighborhood, where the proposals are. Again, Ms. Lee has lived here, uh, in this particular neighborhood since 2004, knows it well. Um, you know, it's important that, that she understood, and I told her, to understand the makeup of the entire neighborhood, the lot sizes, the style of the homes and things of that nature, before you start considering what you'd like to propose. So again, we are requesting, you know, some variances, uh, lot size, um, I will point out that I did a kind of an assessment of all the lots in the area. Our proposed lots, 6,700 square feet, 5295 square feet as well, uh, either exceed or comparable to many of the lots in that particular neighborhood, uh, for overall lot size. Um, we are requesting a little bit of relief for the height of this property. Uh, as this board knows, we are requesting a special permit flood plan, uh, from this board, jurisdiction is coastal storm, the ocean. Um, so that, um, creates a hardship for us to, to, um, to build as far as where our first row will begin. So the, that's why the height has been raised, uh, in that respect, both with respect to the number of feet as well as the number of stories as well. Um, frontage and width, again, comparable to many of the, of the lots in, in the, in the neighborhood as well. Um, you know, front setback we are looking at, uh, I know this board is, is very conscious of, you know, keeping, and I heard it even this evening, where a house is set way, way back, um, there's a couple of reasons why we have, uh, the home, um, with a kind of a short front setback. One is there's a, uh, a stormwater drain owned by the city, uh, in every backyard of that side of the street. Yeah, so we were really forced to move the house up. Um, we did push it back a little bit further, a few feet further than a lot of the homes, uh, just to provide a little more setback. Um, and, um, so, so we let, we wanted to stay in line with those homes as well, including the existing home next door. Um, parking, um, we are incorporating driveways, one already exists for the existing home, we have a driveway, uh, we, we feel we'll be able to provide three parking spaces per home, uh, however, they're not conforming because they will be sacked, and that's what we're, we're, you know, uh, that's what we're, uh, only are able to do at this point. Um, additional relief we're seeking as well is just a finding, you know, uh, from this board, that what we're proposing here will not be substantially more detrimental than would exist today. And as I said, special burn flood plan for this board, because it is indeed in a, in a flood plain coastal storm. Um, I'm happy to take any questions. Uh, Claudia, uh, Claudio Sala is here as well, um, to, uh, present a little bit on the, the site itself, and, um, I will say with respect to flood plane, we did appear before Conservation Commission as well, we did receive an order of conditions, uh, so this home obviously is going to be built, uh, within those, uh, you know, regulations by, by DEP. So we did receive that order of conditions.
Counselor.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor, on, you, you get two and a half story here with four dormers. Why don't you, it's a small lot, 5,200 square foot, why don't you build a two and a half story house with no dormers? Why do you need four dormers up there, look like three floors?
Uh, the dormers herself are, are not, um, creating a story. Um, it's, it's merely attic space.
It's a look.
And I think it's, it's, it's aesthetics is one, um, natural light is another, um, you know, for that area. Uh, it's not real living area, it's really just an attic.
I, I wouldn't be in favor of those dormers. You want, you want, you want to make two non-conforming lots?
You'd rather just have a straight roof or?
Yeah.
Just a straight roof. I think it was more, it was more aesthetics, because it's a lot, it's a little bit of roof.
I know, and then they want, they want a playroom up there.
And natural, and natural light as well, yeah.
But, you know, you're getting, what you get on that lot is what you're going to get. And to me, that's, that's a pretty tall, big house.
I think even without the dormers, I think I have it on my house with the pitch of the roof.
You can, you can speak all you want to them, but to me, let me.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I, I understand.
Can I finish without being interrupted, please?
I understand.
Thank you. I think it's too big. I think a regular sized house like that, you can build that house, as I'm concerned, but take the dormers out and, and shrink the roof, you don't, you don't need to go up that high. So that's just my two cents.
Okay.
Uh, any questions or comments?
Your applicant's going to build this house too, or?
They, they are. This is, this is purely family.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Family's moving next.
Yeah, Florence lives with her folks next door.
Okay.
That, in the existing home, this is building it for herself.
For her.
Yes, yeah.
Um, it might be for Mr. Sala, but looking at the GIS, is, is the, is the house at 46 partially on their lot at all? Have you done a survey with that? It looks like from.
On whose lot?
No, the neighbor?
On 50.
I'll have Claudio speak to, yeah, Claudio speak to that.
I'm sorry, uh, Claudio Sala, DeSalle Burke Sala.
I just wanted to make, I mean, I was just trying to look at the GIS property view and I was just showing that, it, I mean, sometimes they're wrong, I just wanted to make sure.
1266 Francis Park. Um, when you say the GIS, you mean the city's GIS?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I think if you look at the city's GIS, if you look all over the city, I think more than 60% of the, the homes or the buildings look like they're over the lot line.
That's what I just wanted to make sure.
It's the shadow effect and the roof.
Okay, okay.
So there are no encroaches.
There's no encroach?
Nope.
That's all I have for now.
Well, I don't like taking a big lot and cutting it up and then putting a giant house on it. I mean, I might reconsider a smaller unit going in there. I think that's what much.
But again, we, we did a, a, a complete assessment of the neighborhood, so what we're, what's being proposed here is, is nothing more than what exists today at all, all other lots, including lot size, size of homes as well. Uh, this may be a little bit taller because it's new, uh, where the others are all, you know, pre-existing, but we have that flood plane issue we have to deal with as well. So the height might be a little bit different, but overall square footage, uh, is very similar and comparable to, uh, the other homes in that neighborhood. And that's important to me as well. I, I, I would never, I never advise a, a client to shove five pounds in a one pound bag, you know, and I thought what they, what they prop, proposed here was reasonable, even with the dormers on the roof, because knowing that's really just attic, you know?
Counselor, um.
Yeah.
The ordinance requires 7,650 square feet.
Correct.
Both of your lots are going to be less than that.
Correct.
So even though you say that the current neighborhood would comport with what you're drawing for two houses, aren't we going backwards? I mean, the ordinance, now state, the plot should be bigger.
7,650, correct. No, that is true. No, that is true. We are seeking relief for that.
So, comporting with the neighborhood doesn't make any difference because we go progressively, we're trying to make bigger lots. So why are we going backwards?
I'm not sure we're going backwards.
Well, you're saying, it's good because the old neighborhood is similar to that, but the old neighborhood was under previous ordinances.
So we're. But we're also not requiring 12,000 square feet for a lot either, you know, and so this, this was indeed an oversized lot, um, even dating back to when the 70, 76, 7,650 came into, into fruition, you know, this has been existing.
So they have a conforming lot now, but at the end of the day, you'd like us to approve two non-conforming lots.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understand.
Yep.
We just fought one down in Squawton for the same reason, that they were closer to minimums. Had a difficult time getting them by me and Rose, eh? Sorry.
I mean, I think every situation is unique. I mean, the, the only thing I'd say is, we just, we just approved something so another family could age in place, that's the way I look at this, is like, it's a, it's an opportunity for a family to age in place next door to your parents, and I get it, I get it.
You know, can't, I can't pick one neighborhood and not pick the other.
Ah, no.
Not hold the others to some standards. With the, with the.
I wasn't here for that one.
I know. That's what I'm saying, they were, they were closer, they were closer to regulation side.
And the reason is though, down there.
What?
The reason I think we thought that down there is there was big, giant lots everywhere. They wanted to cut that one out. And you're going, nah, then he'll do it, and he'll do it, and he'll do it, you just, you just lost that whole beautiful neighborhood right there, right down Squawton. This is different, it really is. Every lot and every house, they're close.
I agree.
So this thing looks, it does look weird because there's almost like a three-quarter lot on one side, as far as their street is concerned, and then a whole lot on this side. I think if you put a small house in there, I think it would look really nice in that neighborhood, and it would clean it up, because those are bad, that the garage is falling down and everything. Now, I have one question, so where the fence goes down to that garage, you're ripping that garage out, correct?
Correct.
The one that you're keeping?
Both, both of them.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're just going to have this stop at the end, just that, where, where the driveway ends down there, it stops?
It, it is, it is going to stop. I think we really were very reluctant to, uh, to, to, it obviously, there's no one against it, paving the rear yard.
You're going to be underwater when they.
We did, we did refrain from doing that, so I think we just had your straight driveway, uh, come to an end. Obviously, there'll be some vegetation at the end of the driveway.
Both, both, both places.
Both places, correct, yeah.
And, and I think what I'm hearing from these guys, I don't know i- if it's a no, no, no all the way, or it's just no, I don't know, but let's, let's, let's talk it out before we go anywhere.
But to speak to Mr. O'Leary's point, a- as you said, there's a lot of different variables for different neighborhoods.
There's a lot of different variables.
That have to be considered.
That neighborhood's a little different, but, but, but it's a lot tighter down there and you just add into the congestion, I get it, but you are cleaning up that neighborhood, I get that too. Uh, would I, would I vote for that house? No, definitely not. I mean, take the dormers out of it, shrink the roof down, make it like the other houses that are there, not sticking up with a shorter, shorter 5,000 square foot, and then it's, now it's big, it looks huge, but that's just my two cents.
So you, are you coming right down that line like, and you'll have 40 feet of frontage? Is that what?
Yeah.
Uh, we are even more than that. It's, it's our.
I just looked it up, we're, right here.
51.
I thought we had 120.
You have 120 total.
So, yeah, right in the middle of.
No, 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 it's kind of like.
51.
51.
68.
You just even have 68.
68.
I mean, literally every house across the street has 40 feet of frontage.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying, it's kind of like that place, but you don't want to, you don't want the same size and then have this three story building in front there, just, I think that would, that would look weird. It's up to, it's up where we go here, you guys like no, is it two no's there or?
Uh, no.
Yeah, no, okay.
I'd like to hear from the official and the counsel.
All right, here we go.
If I may clarify your point though, you, you have a problem with the, the fountain, the, the footprint as well, or the roof?
A little bit of the footprint, a little bit of the footprint, not a whole bunch.
We're meeting, we're meeting the side setbacks.
We're almost there.
We're meeting the rear and the side setbacks.
You can tell me that all day. You get a 1,500 square foot lot, you ask them for it.
Right.
To me, shrink the building a little bit, get rid of the top, I'd be in favor, just letting you know what makes me.
So for setbacks as well?
Just, you get, you get, you're getting everything you want, you're getting your house there, that's what you want, a house. If that ain't the right house, maybe we, we just vote no.
Yeah.
But let's, let's listen to the name.
All right, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone who want to speak in favor? Come on. Name and address for the record, is there anyone else after that want to speak in favor? Come right up.
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Lawrence Garrity, I'm the neighbor at 40 Division Street.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Okay, I'm speaking in favor because I, I don't, you have a misconception, I think, about the, this house projecting up.
No, I don't.
Okay, I mean, the house on the right side of it is just about the same height.
I get it.
Oh, okay, I live on the other side.
No, I know, I, I get it. I get it.
Okay.
I just don't like four dormers on a house, it's, it's residence A, it looks silly. To me, it's like.
It's the gable.
Well, no, it ain't, they can take that down too. Of course they can. What they want is an attic up there, a plain, I know exactly, you want up there a floor. I'm not in favor of third floors.
Do they have a basement? There's no basement, it's a flood foundation.
Flood plane down there. Is it, it, okay.
Okay, there's no foundation actually.
I understand that.
Okay. All right, I mean.
Go through, I get it.
Okay.
I do, I do get what you're saying.
I mean, I don't have it, and I suffer for that.
I know.
The old foundation.
And I, and I know, and I feel, but you're cutting up a piece of property.
Yeah.
You're putting in a house, and it should be a small house that's in there, so it just makes everything look bigger in that neighborhood, in that place. That's what I think.
All right, I'm still confused.
I know you are. That's all right, I'm confused myself.
Their original house, my house and the house next door, were all built in nineteen twenty-five. They're craftsmen-style houses. Their side gable crafts. So this one.
I walked that whole neighborhood. I walked down there, I walked in your yard, I walked in his yard, I walked around.
Sure.
I had, I had my coat on, so everyone knows who I was. No one would shoot me.
Okay. All right. And the other thing is that what they've done to take care of, or not make any worse the flood conditions that happen in that area.
I get it, I get it. Anyone else wanna speak in favor? Last call. Call-up party hearing closed. I got a letter here. Where the hell did I just put it? Right here? Oh, it's right here. Got a letter here from the DPD.
Forty-six Division Street, case ZB A twenty-three eighty-one. We have reviewed this middle for the above referenced project, and our comments are as follows. The existing paving in Division Street was repaved in twenty-twenty-one. There's a five-year moratorium for any digging on the newly paved street. Insult survey monuments to delineate the subdivision. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Proposed structure should have moved, should move more to the right-hand side. The load from the proposed foundation should not have impact on the existing eighteen-inch drain pipe. Upon completion of the project as Bill filed, our alphabet plan showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with the digital file.
That's good. Call-up party hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. I still said I wanna a couple feet short of a house, a couple feet less width, and take off the dormers, and I'm happy, but that's my two cents.
I am normally not in favor for making two non-conforming lots, uh, but I'm also keenly aware that it's really important to allow people to age in place, and I think this really provides a family situation to age in place, and that's why we have a zoning board for seventy-six hundred and fifty square foot, you know, and that's why every situation is unique. If we didn't, if we just adhered to exactly, oh, we have precedence because we did this last week in this neighborhood, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't exist. There would be no point in us being up here. So I understand your sentiments about saying no and overburdening certain neighborhoods, but I think every situation is, is in a vacuum, and in this vacuum, I'm in favor of it. I would like to see a little smaller house, but if the board's in favor of the size of the house, I'm, I'm good with it as well.
Four bedrooms, three and a half baths, that item, I am not in favor of that size of that house.
I don't think aging in place is inappropriate.
It's a hardship.
They could have, they could have a very large addition to the existing family house.
Single family, you can't have it in law.
In addition.
In addition.
Yeah, I know. I'm not talking about.
No, you have a big archway, like we made him do up by my house. You have a big archway so the family can live there and come here. I understand what you're saying.
So my general rule, and I did this, said this two weeks ago, is that I'm, I'm not in favor of subdividing residential A lots, and if this lot were fifteen thousand three hundred square feet, I might change my mind, because then they'd have two conforming lots. But in this, in this case, I'm not in favor of having two non-conforming lots when the progression of the city is to require larger lots.
Mr. O'Brien?
That's, that's the same way that I feel. It's, this, the zoning changes, I think, as we move down Squon Street. If that's A, then it's saying A, and I'm not, I'm not budgeing.
All right, so you can either, it's not gonna pass, so you can do one or two things to withdraw it and.
I, I think I'd still like to, to request a continuance, you know, to see if we can work on overall plans of the home itself, you know, to, to make it something maybe more applicable to the entire board. I know their objections are the lot sizes, you know, but I'd like to maybe give my clients that opportunity, you know, to, to maybe try to do that anyway.
I, I'll agree to that.
I'm fine, I'm in the, self-mind.
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna change anything.
I don't care what it is. You're gonna do what you're gonna do. I mean, I.
No, 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 it's like, should they go back or should they not? Because don't waste, don't waste the client's money either, if we're not gonna even allow them.
I have a really difficult time subdividing lots in residence A. This is the third or fourth time that I've said no, and I'm gonna continue to say it because that's the way that I believe. I believe that.
I just don't wanna see the client spend the money when it's not gonna happen.
Yes, so they, I mean, they're pretty firm, and they're, they're not gonna do it, so it's, I mean.
You wanna withdraw it?
I'll still request a continuance, but we may, we may withdraw it, but I'd like, for tonight's purposes, I'd like, I'd like to continue.
All right. Make a motion for continuance, and maybe they'll say no, and we'll just get it ourselves and do it over. Go ahead.
ZB A twenty-three eighty-one, Florence Lee, for variance finding a special climate flow plant to subdivide the lot, such a single-family home on the newly created premise number forty-six Division Street. Quincy, I make a motion to grant the continuance.
January twenty-sixth, we have one, right?
No, that's a block. Election Day is in line.
No, January, January twenty-third.
January twenty-third? To January twenty-third?
Yeah.
Second.
On the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abolished. January twenty-third, is it?
It is?
Where's my pen right now? ZB A twenty-three eighty-three, Patrick Foley, ask why for a finding to change the existing commercial space to eight four-hundred square foot units on apartment number ten-fifty Hancock Street. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley with the business address of two sixty-five Willard Street. I'm paying tight regards to ten-fifty Hancock Street. I'm joined by Brian Donahue, who is the architect on the project. Ten-fifty Hancock Street is a fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty-four foot, square foot lot. It is located in the business C zoning district. It is walking distance to the Quincy Center train station. Currently on the site right now is a nail salon and twenty-two small studio apartments, which are occupied by mostly commuters who live there, one because of the price of the units, and two because of the proximity to the train station. Uh, like I said, these units are roughly between three hundred and four hundred square foot units. Uh, right now, the building currently has about three thousand square feet of unused commercial space, uh, which the applicant is hoping to convert over to eight additional small studio units, which will mirror what is there right now, which is, you know, like I said, three hundred to four hundred square feet, um, units. They will run roughly between a thousand dollars and twelve hundred dollars a month. I think these, these changes are granted will be a positive impact to the community because, one, there's a shortage of housing, this type of housing. I know the city recently has been trying to get more workforce housing, um, into the city. I just wanna stress, there'll be no changes to the exterior of the building. All changes will be done on the inside of the building. Uh, we're gonna reconfigure how the building lays out, and Brian will walk through how we're gonna reconfigure it on the inside, um, of the building.
Good evening. Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects, twenty-one McGrath Highway, Quincy, architect for the applicant. With us tonight are Kevin Kelleher and Heath Gatlin, who are part of Quincy Properties LLC. They're the owners of the building. On the top board, um, we have site plans, a photograph of the building, which you, I'm sure, are all familiar with, across the street from the Fowler House and next door with the, the former St. John's School. Interestingly enough, um, this building was built as a mixed-use building with twenty-four studio apartments in commercial space back in the fifties when it was first constructed. We were before this board in two thousand and eight. As you can imagine, in, in this location and the city as a whole, there's a changing market as things change in the city in terms of the, the demand and the market for office space versus residential. So this is a, a perfect example of something that's been through, you know, the historical changes in, in the downtown area. So when we were here in two thousand and eight, we presented adding, going from sixteen units in commercial space to twenty-two units, and it was granted. Mr. Chairman, as a matter of fact, when we had that hearing back in two thousand and eight, I'm not sure if you remember, you made comments about the signage, you thought it was hideous, and you recommended that if we, if we were granted the relief, that they would clean up the building, which Kevin and Heath have done. Also, we've taken, um, through the ISD office with Rob and Jay Dukka, we found that the, the fire escapes that were on both sides of the building were redundant. At some point, I think there was a second egress added in the back over time, so the fire escapes weren't really needed. So I think the owners have done everything possible to keep the property neat, clean, and up, and, and kept up, uh, to a, a pretty good standard. Another thing that, um, they've done recently, they've owned the building since two thousand and seven, recently, there, there was a one-story addition on the back part of the property, in the rear, U. C. Hancock Street, the rear. They, they took that down. There was parking underneath, tandem parking underneath, so the parking situation is actually not really changed from that configuration. There, there really are seventeen marked spaces there existing, but people do park tandem, people that do park there. The twenty-two units that are in the building now, um, the owners keep a record of license plate numbers, there are ten vehicles for the, the residents of the property. So a lot of these people are commuting via the T, don't have cars, work locally. So, um, we figure, given the size of the units, that, that, that the parking requirements are, is a little bit different animal than, than business C to residential, which is one and a half spaces. I don't see why a studio apartment would be required to have one and a half spaces. That doesn't really make a lot of sense. So in general, what we're, we're proposing this evening is to take, um, the commercial space that's left over and turn that back into studio apartments. There are four floors in the building. The top two floors are now all studio apartments. There's ten per floor, so there's twenty in the top two floors. The nail salon that Tony Foley mentioned is on the ground floor. And then there's unused commercial space, if you remember the, um, different status that was in this office, that space has been empty for ten or fifteen years. And then the basement, there are two occupied units, so now there's a total of twenty-two. I won't dwell on the, on the plans too much, so I think everybody's got a pretty good idea. Top floors, this is three, five, ten units. Floor number two, ten studios. These, uh, studios are approximately three hundred fifty square feet, so they're small. There's a kitchenette, um, bathroom, and a bedroom. Your basic studio apartment. The ground floor, um, the existing salon, which has been there for quite some time, that will stay. These are, seem to be fitted up as apartments, but they're unoccupied, as is this entire south side of the building on that floor. So this is the area we'd like to reprove. The, the owners have been trying to rent this space for good years now, and with the way these are COVID and the changing market, this is, it's just not feasible to get, uh, about sixteen units. In the lower level, we've got, these are the two occupied units in the lower level, which is entrance at trade because the site slinks to the back, we have storage, canals space. So what we're planning on doing is making this lower level from two units to four, I have those proposed plans. So this will be the new configuration of the lower floor, we call it the basement. So we'll have four studio apartments down there, so we'll be adding two to that floor. And then on the first floor, we'll be adding six units, for a total of eight new units, bringing it to thirty. The existing nail salon will stay in this space, which is accessible off of Hancock Street. I just wanna show this because this was the, the building in the rear that they, they raised, they took it down, um, they reconfigured the parking a little bit, so it worked a little better. So, um, in general, I think that, in my mind, I think there's, there's a need for these type of units in the city. They're affordable, it's a great location, they're close to the train and local businesses, so, um, I think it is, uh, it would be good for the, the housing market. They're affordable as opposed to some of the other developments downtown, which are, pretty cost prohibitive for a lot of people. So, um, I think in general, that's my proposal, my presentation, if anybody has any questions on.
You're saying beside, beside the salon, these two things are already set up as apartments?
They, they're, they're set up, but they're not, they're not occupied.
You mean, is there, is there a store?
There's a kitchen and a bathroom, but there's not, they're not, there's nobody in, they were only approved for the, uh, six additional units in two thousand and eight, so this, this was not presented to you as new apartments.
My question is, on, on Hancock Street, those two units are there, correct? Right in Hancock Street?
On the, on which floor?
First floor.
First floor.
The two you got right there, that are right.
These are, these are there, and these.
They're in the front, Hancock Street, correct?
This is, this is the back. This is Hancock, yeah.
So the two are, so, so, all right, I see where I am. All right, I got it.
Do you?
The two, the two up front, that's what I don't want personally done. I want Hancock Street to be all commercial. So these units here, two units up front or whatever, should be open. I, I, personally, I get the spaces in the back, the spaces in the basement, but I don't wanna give up commercial space on Hancock Street. I don't think it's fair to anybody. We're eating up commercial space, we're turning them all into residential. Pretty soon, we're gonna have nothing left. I just, you gotta keep the city open, if people want a business on the main drag. So, huh?
One of you want to speak to that?
Sure. Name and address for the record, please.
Heath Gatlin, eight Newcombe Street in Boston. So this part of the building?
Yeah.
These windows here are eyebrow windows that are about that tall.
Boy, you gotta change. I mean, how do you rent it out with that? How would you rent it out for commercial spaces like that?
Because these windows here, all of the units normally have four windows.
Yeah.
So this unit here would actually have one, two, three, four, five, six windows on this side of the building.
Yeah.
Where normally these units on this side only have four. So this, this larger unit here would have more windows even without having these eyebrow windows.
You understand what I'm saying? I don't want residential on the first wall, in the front of Hancock Street. That's where a little business should be going in. We should be saving that space.
So perhaps, perhaps, Brian, like where this was originally, this, there was a wall here, and this was a very small, like attorney's office type thing, you know, just from here to there.
Something, I mean, how many square feet? Four hundred?
Yeah, that would be around four hundred.
So you get, you, you keep four hundred's office space, just save that other space as one space. I ain't asking to do this personally. I just think we gotta, we can't have Hancock Street walk down there and someone's, I don't know.
That, that would seem very possible, because what you could do is just replicate one, two, three, the fourth one here be the same size as these three, and still have a door here with this small commercial office right there.
Just leave the commercial space on the main drag. I mean, it's all changed, huh?
Turn before you get home, too.
You do, in London.
I don't wake up, I'm in the office every day. That's where.
I'm saying, keep some space, keep like six hundred square foot so someone could have a business there. I don't know, whatever, whatever it takes to, to.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
An eyeglass store or something.
That's fine.
No, really, I just think it's, it's, you can't be just sucking up main drags like this and taking off commercial space. They did it in the house next. So we got one piece out of it.
That's fine, Mr. Chair.
One pizza oven, is that your house?
No, we got one little piece out of it, we got one little store.
I thought you said one pizza oven.
No, one, we got one piece left, one, one res, one commercial.
One piece of pizza.
Yeah. Piece of pizza. Guy said, can't rent it. Well, you want two blocks for it, that's.
Mr. Chair, you always would agree now with that.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm, no questions.
One question. On the, can you go through your parking analysis again with me on the number of spaces said why we don't need to have the ordinance point?
Well, the main reason is that it's, it's just not the nature of folks that live in these, uh, studio apartments, to either have vehicles. Like I said, there are twenty-two occupied apartments right now, and there are ten vehicles registered to the alarm. So.
They can stay there, those occupants are staying there during construction?
I mean, I mean, Russell, um, these gentlemen have owned the building for fifteen years, and the most cars they've had there has been ten. So it's utilized the people that just gonna hop up to Quincy Center and hop.
What I'm really asking is, so those occupants are gonna stay there, they're not moving up, then you're gonna renovate the building, and then you.
No. Just, just the states that we're showing of the.
It's empty, it's empty, and there's.
Yes. Everything renovated is.
Couple of carpenters and electrician, I mean.
And basically, is it just gonna, there's no exterior work being done, it's all interior work going, and just reconfiguring how the weight's laid out.
Electrician sneaking everywhere.
Did you hear that?
Electrician sneaking everywhere.
That's it. Electrician swimmers and.
So you feel you'd be, the apartment will be adequate after your.
Yes, yes, yes.
He probably lived there.
That's right. For the overtime. So to be clear, then, what we're saying is we got a lot such space to commercial on that side of the building facing Hancock Street, but the number of units adding will still be what we're asking for.
I say no. Take one away. Take that one away. The one up front.
That's the biggest one.
Give me five hundred square foot commercial space.
We could do that.
And do what you got to do with the rest. Counsel?
Yes, we will make that work. We'll make that work.
Yes.
We can make that work, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Well, it's another place. Someone can open a business or something. No? Any other questions? No? Does anyone want to speak in favor?
Hello, I'm Mike Delaney. I live at ten twenty-two Hancock Street, which is Old Central Junior High, where I went to school in the sixties. And I'm part of the Friends of Butler's Pond. I'm here with Reverend Sheldon Bennett, and we're, we're basically in favor of housing. However, the pond, we appreciate the work that the city has done on the pond to dredge it and improve the management of the pond there. But we're concerned about the pond water quality, and this, this, and I realize that this project isn't going to change the stormwater management, but it should. It should at least look at it. I went to the, to the online source, looked at the documents that were on file for this project, including the DPW and engineering comments letter. None of these mention stormwater management. And this would be a good opportunity to take a look at the stormwater management and make sure that it's, it's being adequately handled and minimizing the impact of the water quality of the pond. The pond has more nutrients than it ideally should have, particularly phosphorus, and this would be a good opportunity to take a look at that and see what, if there's something that could be done to improve the stormwater management. You know, are there stormwater best management practices for this, for this building? And so we request, the Friends of Butler Pond requests that you take this opportunity to review the stormwater management practices of the building and ensure that they're adequate and protective of the pond's water quality. And ideally, we'd like you to send your findings back to us. That's it.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else want to speak in favor?
John O'Neal, Phil six two Grumwall Road. It's a good project. I'd be interested in renting out that three hundred square foot office that you have there because, you know, for one person that doesn't like to go into the office at all, that would be perfect. But that's a good idea. You could still have that other unit, too. I don't think they have to get rid of that unit. They could still have another unit there and have a three hundred square foot office there in front. But this is good new growth. You got good people. What'd you say?
Five hundred square foot.
Well, that would make that other apartment maybe too small.
The other one, they just chopped down a four-inch. They're not in yet.
I would want cheap rent, so I would probably only want to be able to afford three hundred square feet, so... But anyway, I think it's a good project, and I'm in favor of it, and it's been a long night. Let's go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Good evening.
Such a pleasure. I want to call first. I...
I like to sit back and soak it all in. Ward one, Counselor Dave McCarthy, forty-eight Whitney Road. Very familiar with the building. Frequent the Fowler House way too much, so I'm very familiar with the building. But my quick question with that banter back and forth on the number of units, we are trying to put it down to seven or keep it at eight and just make that front?
He said he can make, he can make his eight and still give you five hundred feet in front of him.
Yeah. I'm all for the commercial. You know, as you mentioned, you know, we had our issues down, trying to, trying to hold some commercial down in, in Hausneck a little bit, and it's nice to have it, and it's good to have it there, too, and, and I'm in favor of the eight. And in regards to Reverend Bennett and company, I will personally get ahold of DPW and just, we'll do a stormwater review of the building and maybe possibly a few of the buildings there because we spent a lot of money on Butler Pond. It came out beautiful. We don't want to go backwards, so that's not a big deal. I think that I can get DPW to put that on their agenda to go up and make a review, so there won't be any, any negative impact on the pond, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, Counselor. Thank you for waiting all night. Does anyone else want to speak in favor? Call-up party hearing closed. I got a letter here from the DPW. Do you have their record?
November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Provide plan showing the existing layout of utilities. Also provide details of all utility facilities. We request the applicant's support, submit documentation showing the condition of the infrastructure and sufficient capacity is available for the proposed addition. Any disability parking will be provided. Question. The proposed parking and traffic aisle do not provide adequate traffic movement, especially during winter storms. Explain how snow will be stored and plowed in a winter storm with this parking arrangement. Locate the snow storage areas on the plan. Explain how parking spots eighteen to twenty-four can be accessed if there are vehicles parking on spots eleven to seventeen. I recommend the proposal to be reviewed by the traffic department.
Call-up party hearing closed. Anyone opposed? You're on the side. First call, second call? I got some letters that are on the side.
This one from the Friends of Butler Pond.
Yeah, he was, he was, he spoke.
This is Danson Lee, ten fifty-two to ten sixty Hancock Street. We have enjoyed, we've, we've owned and operated the retail block since, for fifteen years, enjoyed the opportunity to be neighbors with the owners of the abutting property. Since the property has been owned by Quincy Properties LLC, we have seen marked improvement in the neighborhood. We feel the request to repurpose the existing commercial space to the residential units will have no adverse impacts to our neighborhood and will even benefit the neighborhood of businesses and residents. We fully support their application. Come on, read.
I didn't read it. I looked at the first statement, said, and the sign.
Brendan O'Connor, ten fifty Hancock Street, apartment twenty-six. I've happily lived at ten fifty since August of two thousand and seventeen. I currently suffer from cerebral palsy, a neurological disease that affects my mobility. I'm happy to say that I'm living fully independent, maintaining a full-time job, and commute daily from the Quincy Square MBTA station, and I'm an active member of the neighborhood. I currently live on the second floor. If my landlord is allowed to convert the first floor to residential units, I will be able to move to the first floor with a walk-in shower, both of which improve my quality of life. Sincerely, Brendan O'Connor.
I like they've done a nice job.
Yep. Is there anyone else on stake? Opposed around the side? Call-up party hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor with the commercial space five hundred feet.
I'm in favor. I did confer with Director Collin back here regarding a, any type of, you know, review of the filtration system, and because there's no exterior changes to the building, there really is, there's no requirement by us as a board, so appreciate you, Councilman McCarthy, stepping up and helping those, those guys out.
What a guy. What a guy.
What a guy. I'm, I'm in favor, along with Marty's suggestion about the first floor storefront.
Likewise, I'm in favor.
Great. You have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman. Case ZB A twenty-three eighty-three, Patrick Foley, Esquire, for a finding, change the use of the existing commercial space to eight four-hundred-square-foot units on the premise number ten fifty Hancock Street, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the find.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some more. Thank you, guys.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.